Okay, we're going to stand and have the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. First order of business is meeting with the Planning Commission. Bob Richards, I'll pass it off to you.
Very quickly, we had a public hearing at our last meeting to add things to the zoning rules and regulations. There were three different things. There's a regulation to add PUDs to commercial areas. There was PUDs, plan development. So essentially what we're doing with that, essentially with that is we're making downtown legal, which is kind of handy. We subdivision regulations and, oh, I'm sorry. Section 929, which is designated neighborhood regulations. It was a poorly attended meeting, but it was duly warned and regulated. And it's in your court to have, you guys have a public hearing. And that's another checklist off that designated downtown area. So we have one more public hearing we'll have to have for historic district, which I mentioned the last time right here. One of the things with the historic, we're going to try to get this, the, everybody, the downtown EDC, the parent partner EDC, the Historical Society, and everybody kind of do a walk through and pick up things we definitely want to designate as historic. We will do that. We're going to start working on what was suggested to the Planning Commission for the new regulations, and that will be another addition to the zoning regs. So that's ongoing in the future, hopefully in the near future. That's all I got. Just to give you that, and wanted to make sure I got it on the minutes. That's it. The rest of it?
Is that something, Joe?
Any questions?
No. So that's something that we can put in our agenda to, can we have the information meeting like 6:30 to 7:00?
Before the meeting?
And before the meeting and manage to kill two birds with one stone if we can?
The most involved is obviously the subdivision.
Would that be next meeting or?
You have to have 15 days.
Yeah, there's such a.
It's probably right. It's probably, whenever the timing's right, but we'll probably do a couple back-to-back.
Yeah. The subdivision rules are, I think there's 13 pages of an appendix or something like that, but it's really, I think it will be helpful for anybody that has a large development and wants to do a large development because it's step by step.
So I didn't know because of the information meeting was so low attendance. Did a little more, and we have pretty good attendance here right now. Do you have a little more information of what it is around the, like, the downtown designation as well? Or is there doing some?
The whole idea of putting in, the state requires, if you want a downtown designation, you have to have subdivision rules. Their thoughts are that the downtown will need subdivision rules. In our case, probably not relevant to the downtown, but it's relevant to the rest of the town, so that's why you have to have a public hearing. There's very, very little area in the downtown to develop. And some of the things about sidewalks and various things are not applicable in the downtown area, but they are, if you were to put in a new development. So that's where I think it's, it'll be handy for anybody who wants to put in a new development. It's there. Here's what you've got to do. Here's how you've got to do it. Here's who you've got to go to, which is mostly the Planning Commission, as it would be anyways, but it's just a much more step-by-step definition of what, there's two different, there's a major and a minor subdivision. The minor is much less of a regulatory process, for lack of a better term, and that's decided by the Planning Commission.
Okay. Any questions from South Bay members or?
It's a quick read. It's not as bad as it sounds.
So the, if, once more to refresh my memory, the timing of, we're going to have, the plan is, we'll have, we'll meet the necessary requirements for the notice going out, have the meeting. What happens?
Once it's gone through, there's a certain amount of time that petition to have another meeting or to change a rule that somebody may find that they don't like or they think means needs to be more specific or whatever. There's a certain amount of time for that, and if nothing happens, then it becomes, then it becomes part of the zoning regs.
Part of the zoning regs that you just did. Okay. Good.
And that's, that's where everything in there, the three different processes.
The planned unit development, the subdivision regulations, and the designated neighborhood regulations?
Right.
That you're adding to the zoning by laws?
Right.
Is what we're talking about here.
The section 929 that designated downtown stuff is mainly housekeeping. It's a few, it's four, five, or six lines to make us up to date with state regs.
Good.
Nothing serious.
Does anyone who's here have any questions for this, our planning commission? I see we have at least two, and soon to be three, Planning Commission members here tonight. Any questions from anyone? If not, boy, that was, thank you very much, Bob.
And the Planning Commission does approve of your choice. See you later.
Thank you. Amendments to the agenda.
I have three tonight if that's okay with the board. I propose to add setting the tax rate under new business D, approval of the VCDP grant agreement, also under new business E, and then in executive session adding one VSA 313A2. This is real estate transactions, a real estate negotiation.
Do I have a motion for those?
I'll make a motion. We do that.
Second, we know what we're doing. All those in favor? All right. Good. We just made the amendments. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from June 24th, 2025.
Sir, did you? Where the approval?
We'll need a motion in a second, and then we can have the discussion. So if you want to make the motion.
I will motion to approve the minutes. I'll second that.
Now we're open for discussion.
I asked for a copy of the minutes. I'm glad I did because I, what I was saying seemed on the ghost or something because it wasn't put in there about under, about when the sewer idea or the electronic sending out instead of paper for the $5 hour off thing idea in the last meeting. Remember I mentioned that? How about maybe look at other towns or ask them about what they might be doing and whatever you thought that was a great idea? None of that was put in there. I'm not even mentioned in there at all about it. That would be for you, second page.
Is that on the sewer budget?
Sewer budget, yep, and approval.
Okay, so just so I get it right.
So you wanted to say that?
I asked about the other towns looking at possibly what they are doing for that particular idea of going electronic, sending out bills rather than paper bills, doing it through an email.
You mean other towns?
I remember the discussion. Joe, I think.
So these are minutes. They're not a transcript, so it's not going to be word for word, verbatim for verbatim. They're just going to hit the high points. So you may not see everything that you said in the seven minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, because they don't say everything I said in the minutes.
But I just wanted to mean, what was on the ghost and I had mentioned?
Yep. You're definitely on tape though.
All right.
And do we want to, Patrick Fraser had comments about, I mean, we'll add it.
The suggestion was made to compare relevant policies in other towns.
Yep. People don't see that. They can, like you said, it's on tape, they can whatever here if they do it that way, but 90% is what, reading it, right? Thank you.
Can I? You've got some words there for us, right? First, can we withdraw the first motion?
Oh, I withdraw my first motion.
And can we make the new motion with the?
And I will now motion to approve the minutes with the amendment or the change mentioned by Mr. Fraser. Mr. Fraser? And I'll second that.
Comments?
Yeah, mine is about the comments I read about the crosswalk. And I note that no mention is made of Alan Bearden, the attorney for David Nelson, who came to look at the downtown. He made the comment, there was an accident, he thinks it happened. He suggested strongly that have sirens, et cetera, that sort of thing. And incidentally, since we last met, it should be of interest to you to know that, I'm sure you're aware of the flood that took place, flash flood in Texas, was, it turns out, Kern County had a $67 million budget for 2017 that included sirens and that stuff, and they tabled it. So think about that, folks, because I'll guarantee you, there's going to be a slew of lawsuits coming. We can't compare our situation like that, but I'll guarantee you, you will see lawsuits if something happens. So I ask you, you people, to at least consider, look at this, it says the table.
Right now, we're talking about the minutes and so let's, so I understand, just a minute. So I'm looking at two minutes for public comment in the minutes. It has a paragraph.
Two minutes.
No, 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 no. I'm looking at the spot in the minutes, the two minutes for public comment. And it says in there that you spoke about the crosswalk, and what are you saying isn't correct? I'm just trying to understand.
The valuable information was not put in there from Alan Bearden, who's the attorney representing David Nelson.
To the point that Joe made, this was just paraphrasing some things. The audio, the recording has it all. I haven't listened to the recording. But all this is just a general, or we'd have a book, a minutes, that's all, Neil. If it caught, if that caught the gist of it, we're.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm okay with that. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment that we are no longer required to have anything but the most pertinent information, the motions and all that sort of stuff, in the minutes because we're now going to be, it's all unrecorded, it's all recorded, excuse me. And so the minutes are no longer required to have everything. It's a general overview.
Good point. So we have a mo, yes, Lillian?
Lillian Billups, resident of Fairhaven. I'd just like to make one real quick correction to the minutes of what I said. In the minutes, it says that I spoke concerning the annual submission to the select board of all documents submitted to the auditor. Correcting that, what I believe I spoke of was the statute 24VSA 1571D, that it was an internal audit, the internal checklist from the town treasurer, town accountant, to the chairperson by June 30th. It's not the documents that went to the auditor, but in-house to the chairperson.
And the answer is the same answer I just gave Neil, that we summarized there, and the, what you said is in the recording. Are you saying the recording doesn't have what you said?
No, what I'm saying is the way it was written.
Then it's a summary that we have. Hopefully that's clarification. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
No other comments on the minutes? We had a motion and a second that didn't change. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're going to get by the minutes. Department head reports.
We'll start with communications. We received a letter from Cindy Adams. She says, Dear Town of Fairhaven, her Cindy, she Cindy Adams is giving her notice to the town, and she'll no longer want to be a member of the ZBA. She thanks, but life changes, so we need a new member for the ZBA, is Cindy Adams's.
And the ZBA, for those that are, struggle with acronyms like I do, that's the zoning board of adjustment. Yep.
I served on that.
So we've got Cindy Adams resignation.
Yep. Cindy had served for a long time.
And she did a lot of good stuff for us. We will, will.
She was a chair?
Exactly. chaired it and everything, did a wonderful job. We thank her for all the, all the time, interlocuting, so, yes.
Oh, here we go. I wanted to give the board, I wanted to give the board an update on where we landed last year with our budget, because we are in the new fiscal year starting July 1. Your general fund, your 010 budget, which is most things except highway, we landed at 99.9% expended. So that was, we landed right there. Good job by our departments. Sewer fund, they were at 83% expended. I missed water. Bear with me. And water was at 90.02% expended. Highway, the 030 budget was a little over at 101%. So that amounted to about $15,000 over budget. Most of that came from maintenance on equipment. If you look at that line, you'll see that it was over with labor and with parts. Moving on, we got an update from our sewer department, and I'm going to just read this verbatim. The plant was staffed seven days a week for 10 hours a day, excluding the weekends, which they're staffed for four hours a day, four hours a day. Dale Whitmore worked 84 hours, including the holiday. Kerry did 80 hours, and this is over the last two weeks. Eli Charlton, our backup, he worked eight hours. All monthly maintenance for June was completed, and July was started. Wasted solids eight days. Daily testing was for, every day for 14 days, twice a day. Pump stations were mowed and cleaned. Plant lawn was mowed and weed whacked, and you know what? I'm going to make a copy of this and put it in your boxes, because it's still going. So it's just, she's trying to get the point across that they maintain their facility, and they do an excellent job. From the water plant, they're, they're out, they were exercising valves last week. They're going around right now loosening up some valve caps and cleaning out those valves, so that way they can get at them when it comes time to continue. They're doing a Sinotoxin sample with the state. This is, I think this is a voluntary thing. Don't quote me on that, but we do this every year to, with this. And just regular testing and upkeep. From my office, with the tax rate set today, just as a heads up, the big thing that we'll be looking forward to in early August is doing the budget. So we're going to have a few weeks where it's a little lull in the, in the work. I'm sure we'll find something to fit in there, but the next big thing is our budget process. Last week, I met with the Polten Meadowwee folk. The stormwater project is scheduled for early October, the big project out here at the park. I had a few people ask me about Ed. You guys remember Ed from last year, who went around and cleaned sidewalks? Sidewalks are still a priority, though we're taking a little bit of time to clean up the transfer station and stand up the swap shop. You'll see Shaden, who, he's the guy that works down at the swap shop, he helped me out and do a little bit of work in the park today, and then he went out and cleaned the parking lot. So you'll see him around town doing kind of Ed-like work. Okay, so the bobalink, we remember that bird over at the airport? Their nesting ends mid-July, so we'll be out there mowing. We did not kill any bobalink babies this year. Transfer station stickers, we're doing pretty good. We got 450 sold so far. I asked Eileen to give me kind of a comparison from last year to this year. She's going to give me that for next meeting. We signed the bridge loan for the building purchase, so that's moving forward. We're still scheduled for July 14th for closing. I have a walkthrough, Nate and I have a walkthrough on the night, Thursday, the 10th, for that building. For Public Works, they've been, again, a lot of maintenance. They're doing, they're putting brakes on Nate's truck. They're doing a lot of hole patching, picking up roadside mowing again. They still have a lot of ditching to do up on Scotch Hill, but they're getting at it. I want to thank Shaden and Shaden Coombs and Jeff Higgins. They come out, every time I ask, no complaints if I ask them to come out at 6:00 AM and just do a little bit of work down here with me. They're there, and they help. So I appreciate them taking time away from their families to just come and help pick up that little bit of extra work that we've been trying to get done. Oh, Kelly Donaldson, she got 28, she has 28 banners ready to go up, and that process will start, the veterans' banners around town. You'll see those going up starting Friday. Jake Helm has volunteered to use his lift, and he's a volunteer for the town, so he'll be going around putting those up. We have a governor's visit on the 16th at noon, so Public Works has been helping with that. They've cleaned the site, and we'll be going out there for a test run sometime this week, early next, to prep for his visit.
And will that be down where the old outlet was, if weather permitting?
That's going to be at the old racetrack.
The old racetrack, okay.
At the end of Academy Street. We have electricity there, so we can handle the PA system, and then there's enough space where we can get media in.
He's coming because of CHIPS, and can you help? For those who don't keep track of Montpelier all the time, what that acronym CHIPS stands for and why he's coming?
I wish I knew what the acronym stood for.
Community Housing Improvement Program. It used to be Project Based TIF, but they changed the name as they bounced it back and forth between the House and the Senate. But I think I'm close on the, why they're coming.
That's what I call it, the TIF projects. Yeah, but the CHIPS legislation is something that will help small towns like us be able to afford to build housing in our communities. This is, this is, it's tax increment financing, so it would allow us to borrow against future taxes, put in the infrastructure. You're talking water and sewer and light poles and roads and all that stuff that builders need to build homes, but it's just too expensive for them to do on their own right now, because there's just, it doesn't pencil out. So Fairhaven was part of a group that we submitted a lot of ideas, and we really pushed for this legislation, and we thank Mr. Canfield for pushing for us. He's really been our advocate in this. And the governor, they understood how important it was, so they want to come down and use Fairhaven as their landing pad when they announce this. So we'll be onsite again the 16th at noon at the end of Academy Street.
So you're going to be hearing more about this, but when you think of this CHIPS, you think of a way that you pay for that without raising all of our taxes and everything up. It's done to that tax increment financing. In theory, you don't raise the taxes, but you get the houses in, and the houses never would have been there if you didn't put the infrastructure in to get the new housing and everything. That gets your grand list to go up, and that keeps it affordable for us to keep living here in Fairhaven.
Just wondering, do they give you an idea of how much they might be contributing towards the Fairhaven, on that project, CHIPS project?
We.
That's not how that works.
That's not how that works, okay.
They have a bunch of money, and you have to put a project together and ask for a specific. But, I'm sorry.
So the Class 2 grant is in. I signed that document, sent it back to the state today. We're on, we're still on track for paving Scotch Hill, or a good portion of it, but that's been pushed back to late August, early September. But that's still on the docket this year. And the AC units are operational on the first floor, so those are going. For some reason, my front office keeps it at 74 degrees. It's a little muggy, but they're going. And I'm doing interviews for the new rec director starting this week, starting tomorrow. And that's what I have for you today.
And Markowski and the waterline project, is that just about getting down? How's that?
They're doing well. I don't have an end date for that. I can, I can ask them. I have a meeting tomorrow with Markowski and then the engineer, so I can, I can get a date and see what they're thinking.
Good. Questions from board, Joe?
I don't have any. Looks like they're getting ready to hang the power, bring out the splicing out of the bridge. They're getting set up down there today to do that.
Good.
Talking of the new town garage, I recall a conversation of the National Guard maybe needing to use some amount of the land for storage early on. I can't recall what the outcome of that conversation was.
You know, they never responded, but it looks like they've pretty much cleared the space out.
They were talking about possible leasing, and it looks like that's not. John, you had a question?
Was there a police report?
No, didn't hear it.
We didn't have, didn't have one this time, which is for everyone, when Joe reads report from transfer station DPW and all that, we're trying something different there now, because it's hard to get everyone here and for us to get out and see all the places. So he has them all send something saying, here's what's going on, so we can let people know what we're doing, when your tax dollars are going towards DPW, water and sewer and other things in town. Okay. So nothing else?
No, sir.
We're going to, we're going to move on. Old Business Appointment to the Planning Commission. We have an appointment to make.
I received a letter from Sam Lucci saying he would like to be a candidate for the Fairhaven Planning Commission.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Sam Lucci to the Fairhaven Planning Commission.
And for, it looks like for, how many years?
This is the remainder of a term, which will expire March 31st, 2027.
Okay.
I don't want to hold this up, but I obviously can't second that motion.
I will second, I will second the motion. In the case of making a call. Do, any questions? All those in favor before he changes mind? All right? We now have, we now have a new Planning Commission member. Thank you, Sam, for volunteering. Okay. Next on Old Business is $2,500 request from the Historical Society. I see we have quite a few members here. I'll pass the, Michael.
I'm Troy, and just the president of the society. I apologize, none of us were able to be in the last meeting. But tonight, we have Walters Fur, who's our vice president, Yan Ellis, who was our secretary, Larry Brown, who is our historian and past president, Edging Quafter, among other members. So I understand there are lots of questions and discussion about our proposal, about our request that the town spend $2,500 to paint the ceiling upstairs and we finish the elevator well before. So I wanted to clarify some things. We have been in business since 1985. In 1995, the select board gave us permission to use the, what we call the north cluster, the big cluster, for storage of our artifacts. You can imagine, we have a lot of stuff. Townspeople have been very generous, and people who used to live here have been very generous, and we quickly filled up that space. And around 2003, the select board gave us office space in addition to the storage space. We were next door where Joe is for about 15 years or so, and then we moved into the probate office next door. So we basically had space in the building for about 30 years. And last spring, Joe informed us that we needed to vacate our office. There really wasn't any place for us to go, so we had lots of discussions with Joe and the fire department, the itty-bitty committee, a couple of times with members of the select board. the iddy biddy committee, a couple of times with members of the select board. And the plan we came up with, everybody agreed to, was that we would consolidate our office and our storage space into the middle classroom, called the middle classroom, except for the south classroom. Leaving the north classroom, our original spot, for the fire department. Because they were being asked to vacate some of their space also. So there are a couple of problems. One, that the south, south space was not available for us to be in to right away because it was filled with town storage. And that was taken care of probably this April. We finally, we were able to get in and start cleaning. One of our members, Rick Wilson, has been working on the floor and trying to get it looking serviceable. So that was problem number one. And that meant that we basically were operating out of the boxes in the hallway because everything in our office had to go someplace. So it's in the hallway. If you've been up there, you'll notice that it's quite a mess unfortunately. But we were able to operate, do a lot of the stuff we usually do. The second issue, challenge was the heat. Joe was, Joe acknowledged that we can't, couldn't operate in the winter up there without any heat. And we were promised heat and now, several months later, we're getting heat and locally air conditioning because it's opposite problem.
Oh, it's got.
It's very, very hot up there. So, you know, and it's taken many months, longer than we thought it would, but that is being taken care of. Which brings us to the ceiling. The ceiling, I'm estimating 15 or 16 feet high. I actually, I'm not close, but it's around that. The ceiling is a mess. It's peeling, it's rusted. And we believe that it should be painted before we move in because if we move everything in and they have to bring in scaffolding to reach the 16-foot high ceiling, we're gonna have to move everything out. And that's a lot of stuff. Probably 10 bookshelves, 80 boxes, furniture. And frankly, we're old and we don't want to have to move anything. I mean, I'm being honest with you.
No, no.
So that's the, why it's important to us to get it done soon. Which brings us to the elevator lobby. If you've been up there, and I encourage everybody to go upstairs and you look at the auditorium and you think, my gosh, this could be a beautiful spot. I mean, it, it has the potential to be a huge asset for the town. But right now, when you walk off the elevator, you think, oh, this is a construction zone. I mean, it's the wall, like three or four different wall coverings, the holes in the wall, the two different types of floor, this paintable little floor. So yes, selfishly, we would like people to walk off the elevator to our office and say, wow, this is nice. But we also think it will, it's an asset to encourage people to launch things up the auditorium, you know, when they see the potential of the space. So, let's see, what else do I want to say? Oh, so who do, how do we pay for it? Well, obviously, we think it's, part of the infrastructure of the building is the town building. But I know that there were some questions last time of our money and where it comes from and what we had to spend. We have small CD savings. We have a checking account. We have a marble post account. The marble post account is a dedicated fund that was funded by the people who gave us money to dedicate their posts to their family and loved ones in the park. We use, we have that money in savings so we can replace posts, repair posts, clean posts. Eventually, someday, that money's gonna run out because the posts are old and they get damaged and we can't use that money for operating. We do get a little bit of money from, we have two small grants, which again, are dedicated funds that can't be used for operation or for technical projects that we have the money for. And we rely on fundraising, memberships, sponsorships, selling some books and merchandise. Our budget for the year is about $4,900. And if we were to pay $2,500 to get these two projects done, we can do the math, that's half of our budget. So we're asking for a decision sooner rather than later because we want to move in, the fire department wants us to move out, so they can move in. I mean, this has been going on a long time. And it's, it's been challenging to do what we need to do with the way things are upstairs. So if, we hope that you will fund it. If you don't fund it, then we have to figure out what our next steps would be. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do I, any questions? I wanted to the board members first, any questions from the board members?
Well, I definitely agree with it, it needs doing. We just gotta find the money. And I don't think anything was budgeted this year for that project. So that's a problem. I don't know if we can put our heads together and figure something out or not. How much was the ceiling paint?
We got, well, we got two bids, one for $1,100 and one for $2,400. Right, is that, that's right, the last one. And then Rick got an estimate for the floor for $1,400.
When I add that up, there's more than $2,500 though.
No, $1,100, we would go with you, $1,100 for the ceiling.
That was the lowest bid.
That was the lowest.
Okay.
So $1,100 for the ceiling paint.
To paint the ceiling so that you can.
And I would almost say that the ceiling's probably the most important at this point.
Should we get that done first?
That way we can get in. Yeah, the way, right now, we've got stuff in the hall, excuse me, I'm not the owner, I know. We've got stuff in the hallway, it's, it's making it so with our stuff in the fire department rooms, they can't move their stuff out of the big room because they've got no place to go. So it's kind of like we're clogging the wheel until we can get in there. But if we start moving stuff in, you can't get around with anything to do the ceiling and something will end up getting painted or broke or.
Understandable.
Sam?
Well, for me, it begs the question, what the plan was. Prior to your presentation to, to paint the ceiling, I suppose there was a timeline in place for when the objects would be moved and I just don't know that I have clarity around what that plan was precisely.
The plan for, well, the plan for moving?
Yeah, it sounds like the fire department is waiting for your objects to move and, and I didn't know if there was a timeline mapped out for how that was supposed to go.
Well, frankly, when we had to move the office, it was kind of a mad scramble to pack and, you know, get everything in the hallway. And then our focus was on consolidating, knowing that we had to combine two spaces, sorting, giving away, going out, organizing, packing. And it really wasn't until, I want to say April, that we got into the big room to even see what we had to work with because it was full of stuff. And when Rick got to work on cleaning it, we realized, wow, this space is pretty good. Until you look up. Because our first, the fire, what will now be the fire department, that ceiling is beautiful. We never even noticed the ceiling before. So we don't, we didn't really have a plan.
The other thing is, we, we couldn't work in the wintertime, there's no heat as of last year. And now it's, it's an oven up there. So the light is fixed, that also.
The AC, do we have AC working up there yet?
Not yet, they're working on it.
Does that?
I don't have a timeline.
I just gave to one of the workmen on Monday, because I was upstairs. And I asked him about the status and he said, it would be soon. And I said, you mean, we might not have to suffer in the heat in August? And he said, yeah, that's right.
So there's an end, there's an end in sight.
That's a good sign.
Fine, I just want to add that we cannot do any research. And when people call us and say, do you have this, do you have that? We can't even, we don't know where anything is.
It's intoxicated.
It's a nightmare. And so the quicker we get back in there, it's gonna benefit everybody.
Joe, you wanted to say something?
I would just be cautious with his August deadline. As you know, deadlines tend to move back and back and back and back. So I wouldn't hold him to it.
You're just trying to be.
He's very close. And I took, I was, I took that as a good sign.
They're moving along fast, I just.
Lillian, thank you for, for being patient. You had something you wanted to?
Yes. With respect to the Historical Society requesting funds for the heating, cleaning up in front of the elevator, et cetera, and the ceiling. I attempted to present these documents to you outside and I suspect you didn't want to take them. I did discuss and explain to Mr. Lucci prior to the meeting. However, this is something that I've been speaking of and about for a long time and it's fallen on deaf ears. And unfortunately, but yet fortunately, the Historical Society is now bringing it to light. I particularly would like to, and I've just given Ms. Brown a copy of it, a letter dated April 29th, 2022, on the Congress of the United States letterhead, signed by Peter Welch. And you've heard me speak many, many times about the Peter Welch grant upstairs, the Peter Welch grant upstairs. In particular, it goes on and it talks about the request signed by Mr. Gantner for the finalizing, this is again, April 22, with the granting of this in December, January, 22, 23, which was 22 years ago. The town did receive $250,000, particular to, the application was for, particular to, improve the quality of life by creating the third place upstairs for expanding access for local historical artifacts through local displays and connecting the new space to the town. And we'll have heating, heat pumps, et cetera. That again, is approved in this particular letter. A requisition of Congress, federal funds granted. However, when I spoke of this over and over again, in the minutes, all documented, not personality conflict, June 11th, 2024, I questioned, what happened to the beautiful?
Lillian, we need to wrap this up. This is a comment to, what you're, what you're discussing is, we have multiple grants and that, that's why.
What I'm saying is that, when I questioned it, 30 seconds. When I questioned it before, Mr. Richards said, that money, all got put in the pot and there's $9,000 left. From the minutes, it went for the downstairs rug and improvements downstairs. So there should be absolutely, positively no hesitancy on this board to grant the Historical Society the funds they're asking for because in fact, their funds from the Peter Welch grant are sitting out there in the rug and Eileen's sliding glass window.
Thank you, thank you, you've taken, thank you for your comment.
You're quite welcome.
What if the Historical Society wasn't going into that room up there? The town would have to figure out something else. They would be doing something else with the room. At which point, the town would have to take care of the ceiling anyway. I don't understand why we're hesitating. I mean, I do understand why we're hesitating, but I think, I think we should try really hard to find the money.
We, thank you. Any other comments?
Ten of funds that weren't 100% used on last year's budget be put into that from the town manager's report earlier? One of the departments used 90% of their money, but that left 10%. I don't know, I'm asking.
Good, good questions, but understand, the reason I'm cautious about what I commit to and not commit to. We have the project ongoing where we're putting heat pumps into the main hall, fixing the ceiling in there as well and fixing the floor in there as well. I'm not, I think, this is just me, I won't speak for Joe and Joe will correct me or kick me under the table if I'm wrong. But what I'm concerned about is, we're gonna, we're gonna be doing something with the floor in the main hall. I don't want to bring people in to do the floor in front of the elevator, have them go back and bring people again into the floor. I think we can probably more cost effectively do all the floors at once. I'm not, not, I look at the ceilings and say that when we paint, we need to fix and paint the ceilings. I don't know if there's any paint for the ceilings, I don't want to overcommit. But I know we, there's work we have to do in the ceiling because there's a big hole in one corner.
Yeah, that's true. So since we're talking about the topic, so I've, y'all have been here much longer than I have, right? I've only been here going on eight years. But as far as I can tell, the building has been neglected for at least a generation. Or am I wrong? 20 years, 30 years? What we're doing, we're rehabbing this building within less than a decade. We're pulling it back from the brink. I know it seems like it's taking a long time. And it, I guess, maybe it is. But after almost a generation of letting the building rot, just let it rot around us, it's gonna take some time. It's gonna take some time to put in an elevator. It's gonna take some time to put in the carpet and to paint the walls and to repair the holes. And I know we don't want to wait. We want it done right now because that's the way we live. What I'm asking you is for some patience. I'm fighting back a generation of neglect. And what I'm doing is, I'm going to every State Department, every federal agency, asking them to give us free money to rehab a building, a historic building in our town. I would love it to be done yesterday. It's not gonna be. But what we're doing is we're using other people's money to rehab a building that was neglected. What I'm asking you for is patience.
Joe, we appreciate that and we appreciate what you and the select board and everybody else involved has been doing. We who wrote the history that you see in an exhibit out here that we funded completely. That was done without money. What do we have as a matter of fact? That's neither here nor there. We sincerely appreciate your request for patience. What we are trying to do here really is to get out of a dilemma. The fire department needs to get in. We need to get in. And we want to do that. But if we, at this point, neglect the ceiling and then have to move everything into the auditorium later on, a year from now, two years from now, whatever that is, it's going to be a major disruption at that point in time. What we're trying to do is to head off the problem at the pass so that we don't have to face that later on. Understood. Yes, Lorraine?
No, that's fine, I just wanted to remind Joe that there are at least two grants that I can think of that I've recommended to you to do exactly the work that we've been talking about. And you have said, quite frankly, and I understand your position, that you don't have time to administer the grant, even if you got the grant. So yes, I understand and appreciate that you're bending over back and trying to get this project done. But as was pointed out, there was money earmarked for the project that. that either didn't go as far as it should have or wasn't spent on things we were supposed to be spent on. And we're talking about eleven hundred dollars to get us moved in quickly.
So I will correct you on that. Lillian Bilowicz is completely wrong.
Right.
And she has done her best to stop this project from going forward.
I'm reading for the, yeah, I'm just reading what the, what the, the funding grants.
Yeah, Lillian Bilowicz is wrong, and she's intentionally trying to stir the pot.
Lorraine?
I just want to say, I'm part of the town plan. The town plan says that the Historical Society is to promote the history of this town and bring in tourists. Where are tourists going to go now? And how many people contact us and say, well, can I look at this? Can I look at that? I just met with a woman about the, uh, marbleizing slate. We couldn't take her up there. I have to go find out all the papers, and she met me at my house. And we went to them.
Understood.
You're going to be updating the town plan, and that's part of the historic district. You've got to look at that.
John?
Yes, my name's Jonathan Bilowicz. Um, just a simple question. Since this renovation has begun on this municipal building, um, as Mr. Gunter stated, he is begging, pleading, Oliver twisting, please, sir, can I have some more for all the agencies? Um, how much free money, um, has Mr. Gunter spent or invested into this building? Last I knew, it was just north of a hun- nine hundred dollars.
That's, that's not the question we're addressing right now. Now, we're addressing a request for two thousand five hundred dollars to do some work upstairs. And I don't want to, I want to keep that there, and the discussion there because we, for the time being. I want to, I'm going to come back to, any other thoughts or comments from the board members that are here?
I, uh, you know, my only thought is, I agree with getting the ceiling painted. If there's any possible way that we can scrape up some money from somewhere.
It sounded like eleven hundred dollars.
Eleven hundred dollars. Uh, even if we got to go out on the street and beg, I don't know. I, I agree with getting the ceiling done, putting the floor off until such time as we can put the floor and the hall together and do the floor.
Then we can, we can do our thing.
But I don't know if we can find the money.
Just, just, just a second, I'll get, did you have a thought there or anything you wanted?
Um, my, I guess my only thought is to, hmm, have a better sense of what the long-term plan is for the second floor, the timeline and phasing for the various rooms, the walls, the ceilings, the floors. To, I, for myself to have a better sense of that before I could vote on appropriating funds for anything specific. And again, to Rich's point, I don't know where the money would come from specifically. So I don't feel like I'm in a position to commit any funds at this moment. But I, I think it, it's a problem that obviously needs a solution.
Well, I want to clarify this. So somebody used more than two million dollars of what the fire department.
Good, that would be, that's, that would be a good source.
That's the longer term plan we have. Right, mercy.
Laura, uh, what, what, you had a comment you wanted to make?
I have a proposal, actually, just listening to all of this because, um, I think everyone in this room agrees that the Historical Society is an invaluable part of this community and our history. So I don't think there's anyone in this room who disagrees with this. And it seems like for the amount they're asking, somewhere between eleven hundred and twenty-five hundred dollars, we could pull that out of the emergency fund. I realize it's not a dire emergency, but it seems very, very important. And then killing two birds with one stone, we could take Joe's idea from last time of the five dollar reimbursement on a water bill, and we could make that money back so fast. Because I've done the market research on it. The average cost nationwide to mail one single bill, and that includes labor, paper, ink, et cetera, et cetera, is in the range of twelve to forty dollars for one, okay? Converting to email, the average is three. Now, not everyone is going to do it, and that's fine. There's no negative to that proposal because there's no fee instituted for a person who doesn't want to convert. There is the choice to not convert. So if you just take, there's nine hundred bills, more or less, that go out. If you take ten percent, a hundred people that convert, I know at least twenty right now that don't convert, and I haven't even started talking to them. If you take a hundred people, and then you take that lowest saving, so the average was twelve to forty dollars, so let's knock it down to ten, okay? Ten times a hundred is a thousand dollars. Each billing cycle that you're going to get back once you replenish that five dollars, which will be replenished in the very first cycle, which means upwardly driving that discount. If you end up someday with five hundred people, you're banking twenty thousand dollars a year that can go toward raising people's pay to other necessities. But for right now, for the need of the Historical Society, you could pull that eleven hundred dollars out of an emergency fund, institute the five dollar conversion if people would like to do it on the water bill, and make that money back within the first quarter.
Okay, thank, thank you for your suggestion. Yes.
And Alice, um, and the other thing we've got to remember is, if, if you do this, you're not just helping us. We can get out of there, and then it'll help the fire department too. So you're helping two groups, not just one.
Exactly.
Understood. Johnny?
One quick last thing. Before we go slap and paint up on everything, what is the actual condition of the slate? Are there any holes, pieces that need to be removed or replaced?
There's.
You can slap, you can slap a fresh coat of paint on the turd, but at the end of the day, it's still going to be turd. Not even, no disrespect.
No, there's, that's a, that's an ongoing and legitimate concern. Thank you.
And another, to follow up on what Jonathan said, um, we don't want to have, no pun intended, history repeat itself, um, but asbestos upstairs. I don't know if the entire upstairs, um, there needs to be the actual testing beforehand.
Thank you, we're, we're good. We've, we've used most of this time up here for this. Got a lot to mull over. Unless there has, unless there's a motion, I don't believe we're ready to make. Because there's a lot of, it's, there's, there's a suggestion of where you can get the money. I, there's a lot of different places where you look if you were. Understand the problem a, a lot better though with having you here talking. I really appreciate your, the letter you filled out, coming in and helping us under- understand that and, and, and different people's suggestions. I really appreciate that too.
Are there, Anne Finley, are there any funds coming in from like this big food truck thing that we're having? Is there any way any of that could happen? Anything from that? It looks like it's being made at this big thing.
It's.
I don't know what's.
I think we collected a pretty meager.
It's a, it's a fine, it's, it's a small permit to be a vendor. It, uh, it would take us a lot of years to get enough money to, I, I, but.
I like the thought that a fundraiser.
A fundraiser, a fundraiser, could you do a fundraiser to, to, to get the, but even.
That would be a big help.
But Neil?
Yeah, this is a suggestion. You're talking about, you know, you have a twenty-five hundred dollar opening, right? That's what you're looking at?
I'm, I'm looking for eleven, eleven right now, and just getting the painting is what I'm, what I'm hearing so we can move, make, make the moves happen.
Whatever dollar figure, what, what do you feel you could pull me out?
We, I don't, I don't want to make a commitment now without seeing.
What I'm trying to find out, once you ascertain that, reach out to your community. You've got a ton of people that have relatives that went to school here. I went to school where they all been, but not been that long. But there's people out there that, who donate money for, for a cause. But you've got to give them a reason and give them a facility. Because it makes sense, I have a Historical Society in the very building. It was a high school at one time. And what you're battling, whether you like it or not, is you're battling the high school. Because the high school is your biggest budget, cherry item in the whole.
Yep.
And they have games, et cetera. So you're, they got problems. So you're going to have to go understand the law.
And I would, sorry about wrapping this. I know you want, want a decision as soon as you possibly can, and, and so don't we. So, but I think we, you've given us a lot to, to think about.
Well, if you have any other questions, please be in touch.
But thank, but, but, uh, thank you for coming in and.
Sure, I think.
Thank you for, for listening.
Hey, one, one last question I have for you all before you leave. Um, I know right now that everything is still sort of boxed up, and that's why we're all here. But do you all spend time, uh, here in the building at any given sca- on any regular schedule right now?
Not right now.
No?
Other than, we have monthly meetings in the scope.
Okay. And, and when does that monthly meeting occur just?
Monday, every third Monday.
Third Monday.
Third Monday, okay. Thank you so much.
Right next to him.
We don't ever set up the room because if we set up the room.
Then we're going.
Then we're dropped away.
Of course. And, and then, uh, Lorraine alluded to some requests from folks, perhaps for records that are, are, how do folks get in touch with you when they have those requests?
Well, we, they're on the town.
The people could do it, but not us.
So is it Facebook generally?
And we have all the people that, we have a news player that goes out every, um, three months.
Yep.
So they, they. The majority where money goes.
And we get email.
Which raises, which raises one of our questions. Do you get our quarterly newsletters?
Yes, they do.
You said that. Do you receive them?
I've seen it before.
Okay, and, and the mail.
Well, but you're a member. So you're going to get your own.
But I.
I think, I think what a lot of people, I think what a lot of people.
They, they do.
I think what a lot of people, just to clear the air a little bit here. A, a lot of people don't realize, the town, we can't take taxpayer money and just move it every which way we want to spend the money. Because we'd be in deep duel with everybody, including you folks. So we have to budget the money in order to spend it. It's not like you guys can go out and fundraise. We can't do that. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So.
Thank you for coming in. I, I appreciate. Okay, uh, moving on to approving the water and sewer rates.
So we went, we went back to check the water and sewer rates, um, to make sure they were okay, make sure they were correct. Um, I'm requesting the board to approve the water rate at eight dollars and forty-six cents per thousand gallons with an approved base rate of thirty-eight fifty, um, and a sewer use rate of fourteen dollars and twenty-eight cents per thousand gallons with an approved base, with a base rate of twenty-five dollars. All right?
I make a motion that we, uh, accept these rates.
Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? Just want to make a comment. This is the first time I can remember since being on the board that both water and sewer actually, not only did it stay level, it went down. It doesn't happen that often. But, uh, okay, we know what we're doing. All those in favor? Aye? Two of these to bear to sign? While we're getting those signatures on that, I, I'd like to move on to the new business, which is an outside consumption permit.
Yeah. Yep. Paul Mountain Wines up on Scottsdale to look for an outside consumption permit.
I make a motion that we grant that permit?
Um, yeah, I will second to approve that.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Nothing to sign, we just used the minutes now.
Perfect. Next, under new business, unregistered dogs.
Yeah, so there's, there's no action by the board, but, um, Town Clerk Laramie needs to hand that off and, and let the board know that we do have, oh, let me see, sixty-nine unregistered dogs. Oh, wait, back up. Not renewed this registration. Yeah, sixty-nine additional unregistered dogs.
But, and, and I think that, and that is sixty-nine that were registered last year that if we make the assumption they're still here in town, didn't get registered. Just want to let you know, if someone moved and took, uh, you know, Rover Willem there, okay, it would be sixty-eight, but it's, it's a high number.
Thought maybe Danny was doing a little detective work. That makes more sense than you.
It's a very high number, but it may very well be higher than that.
It could be.
We don't know the ones that have never been registered.
Correct.
That is, that is correct.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yes, but.
Question on that?
Sure.
When is the last time the dog, the town completed a dog census? Because I know thirty, well, let's go forty-plus years ago, I got bit by a dog, an unregistered dog. And back then, the town was required annually, I believe, to, by the state, to physically go door to door and count the dogs after the dog registrations. I do not know if that law is still existing, but I'm curious when the last time an actual dog census was done.
I've been on the board for seven years, and I haven't seen it done.
So I don't know, again, if that was.
But I'm just.
Still thing, but just food for thought.
And, and again.
I agree with point, how many there actually is that are not registered.
And the reason we're doing this is, it's a health and safety issue. Absolutely. And we, we average, what, probably I bet, three to four dog bites. I think there was two just this, just this spring. So, yeah. So we're, we're going to keep working on it, is the answer. Okay, uh, fire department compensation policy.
Uh, so the fire department updated their compensation policy, uh, to pay our firefighter fighters for the trainings that they do. Uh, in your packet, you should have, uh, a version with the strike through, and then I have a clean copy for signature.
There's a backstory on that. We, um, last year, when we came in with our budget, we added money to the budget and discussed with the board that we were interested in extending compensation for training hours. Uh, as the only municipal department that right now is not compensated for training. Waste water is, water is, DPW is, police are. Um, we see it as a proven retention, a benefit, and a way to encourage more firefighters to give up more of their time as we moved less. Two weeks ago, when we gave a report, we had a member that gave vacation time to go and take a, a course on his own. And, uh, we just felt that in this day and age where people are hard to come by and even harder to keep, that a little bit of an incentive would, uh, would be in the town's best interest to have better training and hopefully more better trained firefighters.
Yep. And as Joe said, this is something I think we agreed to do during budget time. We're just formalizing it now with, with, with the policy.
Yeah, the other thing that we did as part of this change in policy was we struck any reference to volunteer because the structure department is an on-call municipal department, and you volunteer to walk through the door. After that, you become a municipal employee when, when your, uh, when the call comes in.
Yeah.
So that, that just reflects the act, the more activity reflects the actual structure.
And to clarify a, a bit more, it's not, every hour isn't paid for. This is still pretty much a volunteer group. It's when they're going on call and when they're in training, we, there's a stipend that we, that we pay. Because sometimes the, the amount of training, we have a lot of new firefighters out there and a lot of training going on.
On average, your officer group probably spends, depending, not every officer all week. I know for me, there's weeks I spend between three and ten hours of my time that will not be compensated on that, which I will continue to do. Same for Chief Heller, um, you know, Captain here, Charlton. So it just helps those little things. We did little, neat little thing. We had fit testing, which is your mask, how it fits and stuff is required with that. We've pretty much doubled that with our recruitment this year versus what we've done in the past.
And we also have, uh, with Chief UCL being a, uh, state instructor, he donated his time, so we were only charged a, a reduced rate by the state for that.
Good deal. So I will entertain a motion to accept the fire department compensation policy update.
I make a motion that we accept this update.
I will second that motion.
We know what we're doing, all those in favor, aye?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, gentlemen?
Thank you for what you do there, gentlemen. Okay, while you're, we're getting the signatures on that, I'm going to move us on to the next item on the agenda and that is setting the tax rate.
So we're, we're about a week behind, but we're, we have staff lined up to get the tax bills out. So it's...
No, go ahead.
It's a great year to be in Fairhaven. So we talked about the water and sewer rates coming down just a few minutes ago. Now we're proud to say that you'll see a reduction in your tax rate. For the homestead tax rate, it's coming down two point nine, two point six-nine percent. Your non-residential rate is coming down one point seven-three percent. This, this is mostly due because, because the state-controlled numbers for homestead education and non-homestead education came down dramatically. Six and a half percent for one and negative four percent for another. What contributed to, what helped contribute to the reduction is we saw a little, a little bump in our municipal grant list. Not a ton, but just enough. And then the town itself, the select board and the staff, they really managed to keep the increase, the increase in the budget down to something better than reasonable. And on top of all that, we saw, I think it was a sixty-three-thousand-dollar increase in our non-tax revenue. So all that piled together, we get to see a reduction in the tax rate this year. So with that, the, the homestead tax rate, the proposed homestead tax rate will be two dollars, six, six point six oh four two cents. And then the non-residential tax rate is set at two dollars, two point nine three oh eight dollars. I said that wrong.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we set the residential tax rate for two thousand twenty-six at two point six zero point four two per one hundred dollars in assessed value.
Do I have a second, Sam?
I will second that motion.
Know what we're doing? All those in favor, aye?
Make a motion, set the non-residential tax rate for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six to two point nine three zero eight per one hundred dollars in assessed value.
Do I have a second?
We'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we just set the tax rate.
The bills will go out probably Thursday. They have to go up by the town.
They go up when?
Probably Thursday.
Okay. Under new business E, approve the VCDP grant. Or I like to say, we're looking at the old skyline place where we're doing the modular housing. That's the grant that's looking at the feasibility for that.
Yeah, exactly, this is the, the, VCDP has given us sixty thousand dollars to assess the usefulness of that building to turn it back into a modular home producing factory.
Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we do that.
Sam?
I will second that motion.
Discussion, do you know what?
This is, this is...
The motion was to approve the VCDP grant, yep?
This is the same grant we've been talking about for several months, just coming to fruition.
Yeah, we just finally got...
Finally ready for a signature. Yep, so we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And, look at that, we're fifteen minutes ahead of time for, two minutes for public comment. Go ahead, Patrick.
Oh, sorry to bring this up, but I got out of D. J. Hoo again from two thousand twelve. I, wondering what perpetual care actually means at a cemetery, especially Cedar Grove. My sister passed in two thousand twelve and we had the stamens and it happened then as we just did now with my dad's grave in two thousand seventeen when he passed, but just this year. Me and my sister and my mom went to Hicks and bought a nice huge glass saying to dedicate from my dad for his birthday on May thirty-first. We had initial ideas, Peter Loris doing the engraving on it. Went on a huge thick easel and we brought it down on dad's headstone for Frager on the right side of the cemetery down there, you'll see it. Unfortunately, you won't now because somebody smashed it and like my sisters from Cary, when dad bought it in two thousand thirteen after Anzola had passed, it was all smashed, we're wondering what's going on down there and we're, we're losing stuff real valuable or sentimental to us. And we're finding pieces all over. We did find one little thing that was inside, we put a little small sunflower thing and that was it laying on top of the headstone. But we were down picking it up, me and my sister, the other day, the glass. It was a huge gold, almost when I call it a goldfish gold size, but it was all smashed and the lettering was sentimental, of course, had all our names on it, it said, the living father and all that. And so we're out about a hundred dollars now. And this is the second time, this is running around, I remember my dad came to the board way back in thirteen when that happened with Anzola's situation and got no answer out of it. I don't know what can be done, I don't know what's going on. I don't think we have that many people in town that hate the Fragers, I hope not. But anyway, yeah, so just curious what could be done or what should we do or what? Because there's sentimental value within stuff that really hurt to have to go down and see that.
Sorry that happened.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry too. Don't know, I don't have a response for you here. Just so to help, we are the cemetery commissioners as well as the select board is, is the reason for that, so. It's something...
It's my understanding that perpetual care has always kept a mold growing.
Right.
Okay.
I don't think we're responsible for other stuff.
For vandalism?
Yeah.
But, sorry that's happening with...
I'd say...
Yeah, because we're kind of tentative now, of course, as you can imagine, putting any answer on what's happening next. I mean, thank you.
John?
Real quick, my name again is Jonathan Billits. This is concerning the police department. I've noticed over the last couple of months, nothing against them, but they've been doing quick patrols in the apartment buildings downtown and in private businesses and so on and so forth. They could be setting themselves up for liability lawsuits if something should happen because they are privately owned buildings. And I don't believe a public police force should be patrolling private buildings like that. They should, the building owners should be looking into securing, security cameras, better locking mechanisms, so on and so forth. That's pretty much the reason why RCPD, Walton City Police Department, hired stock, or Walmart hired stocking and stock using the RCPD control Walmart. I just don't want to see you guys getting any more lawsuits.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, Neil?
Yeah, the planning commissioner, he's the newest member?
Yes, that's right.
That's good here, okay, I need to know the list who's on it, where they meet and you want to get out of there in Canada. When they say wait for the hydro project.
I, I know for certain it's available on the town website, but is there anywhere, or sorry, a website?
Are they booked up or what?
This, this might be a conversation not in a select board meeting, maybe just come to my office.
I need to get that ball on, right?
Yep.
God damn, it's hard to see her on it.
Thank you.
First, third, and these are...
I know they, they meet on Wednesdays.
First and third, Wednesdays are off.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you can just...
I guess I could get a list who's on it.
And you've got, Anne here is on it right in front of you as well.
Well, we've got a specific thing, this is big stuff, this is the revenue producing.
Good, any other? Yes, William?
Tying this into the financial aspect checkbook and accounting for the town. Last meeting, I spoke about the internal audit, or the internal checklist that was due by June thirtieth from the town accountant, town treasurer to the chairperson. I would hope that Mr. Travers has received, approved and reviewed the checklist from the town accountant or town treasurer pursuant to statute.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Moving on to parking lot. We still have the same items, neighborhood designation, subdivision, transfer station operation. Are we at a point or you want to keep it on for a while that we're...
No, we can still do better down there.
Okay.
I think we can improve on, on what we do with our scrap and what we can do with our free out. It's a slow process.
Fair enough, and downtown designation, so those we have there? No one has anyone from the board here wants to speak? Board roundtable, Sam?
Thank you for approving me to join the planning commission. That's about all I have this week, so I'll pass it off to Rich.
Rich?
I know our DPW crew is real busy. I was just wondering if maybe we could have this, have a note on the, on the desk that they can get up down onto West Street here and clean up that side where we had the big dig. That, tidy that shoulder area up. Not a big job. But it's a job that hasn't got done yet.
Good, anything else, Rich?
That's all I have.
The only thing I have is I want to thank whoever made, get those trees on West Street that for the last three years, we wondered if they were going to fall down or not. We've got one down, one, I go, you live down that way, Anne. It looks like the new owners that they come in are taking care of the trees and they, which...
Yeah, it's like, oh my god.
Yes.
Like the last guy that took down like four in his front yard and it's like, holy crap.
It's, things are, things are going well. Okay, reviewing the financial reports.
We got, buddy.
Wait, wait, wait.
Yep.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the payroll of forty-five thousand, five dollars, seventy-one cents.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the warrant of four hundred seventy-four thousand, three hundred and five dollars and thirty-five cents.
I will second that motion as well.
And that is so high because we have like a whole bunch of money going to Markowski over, I think it was over four hundred. That was the bulk of that.
Yep.
Four hundred and forty-six thousand, six twenty-seven was...
That's for the sewer, the water line project.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Checkbook status, two hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and fifteen cents.
And, and that's with brackets in the, in the negative, but we're, you know how sometimes you have a lot because you haven't made a school payment? This time, we, we have more money coming in, but it's, it's, it's showing in the red right now. I don't know if you have a better explanation, but that's...
It's every time, we've hit the negative a few times over the last eight years and it's, you have money, it's just without the tax revenue coming in right now, the checkbook shows.
As we're changing the fiscal...
With the tax bills going up, you see that number pop up.
Okay, good. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I will motion to go into executive session.
I'll second that.
You have, you need to...
To discuss personnel, one, VSA, three thirteen, A four, as well as, I wrote down real estate, but I can't recall what the second full.
Real estate negotiation.
Real estate negotiations.
One, VSA, three one three, A two.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?